Next we'll go into Good and Welfare. For anyone addressing the committee during Good and Welfare this evening, please begin with your name and address. Your comments shall be no more than five minutes of speaking time and should be in good decorum. Please be aware that the committee cannot respond to you during Good and Welfare, but may direct you to an appropriate member of the administration team or may meet with you directly after the meeting for further discussion. And also I'd like to say that, let's remember that student identities must remain confidential. Does anybody want to address the school committee this evening?
Good evening. My name is Rob Stewart. I'm the president of Wasaki Teachers Guild, 68 Cumberland Wasaki, Rhode Island. We, the educators of eleven public schools of the city, are here tonight because we want you to see us and hear us. We want to be safe. Wasaki educators and the school district have a disagreement right now when our history has been more collaborative than the past. We've had an increased amount of dangerous situations in the schools and we've reached out to Wasaki Education Department, WED, to resolve the problem. Their request was met with silence. No email response, almost no discussion of possible solutions. We were concerned. There have been documented assaults, staff, students, and administrators. And from the beginning of this dispute, what the guild was looking for was a conversation. We needed the district to sit with us, simply lay out reasonable steps, a plan to do well, and a timeframe to address issues to make the classrooms safe. There's no point in filing a grievance or arbitration if we're talking and working together. This was a solvable dispute. There are legal requirements, and the district may claim they're required to follow the law. We agree, follow the law. I would add, however, that there are steps outside of legal requirements that make students and staff safe. There are in-person conversations, phone calls, returned emails, that, you know, that make us safe. There's behavior interventions, paraprofessionals, and prohibit backpacks, and on and on and on. There are a lot of steps and tools in our tool belt to find solutions. And instead of discussing these things, our inquiries were met with silence, leading to a grievance and to us being here tonight. We're here tonight because we need to be. I can't look away. We can't look away. I do not know why does this disagreement, a dangerous situation, egregious conduct, and WED has chosen not to work with us. Wasaki Teacher Guild has not filed grievance after grievance. In the nearly five years I've been president of Wasaki Teachers Guild, we have not appealed for arbitration, not once. Disagreements have come up, grievances were sometimes filed, and we've worked through the problems. And the grievance is generally withdrawn. That is not where we are right now. Last week went ahead of me in denial of safety grievance, and we've since filed for arbitration. Again, we're not looking for grievances as arbitration. We're looking to have conversations, reasonable steps to address safety. Safety affects every teacher in this district, and we want to feel that you see us and you have our backs. Moving forward, what we should be doing and can do is hold regular meetings. As simple as that, hold regular meetings. We sit, we collaborate, we reason, we discuss, we focus on what can be done, what discretion and what reasonable choices we do have instead of what cannot be done. We understand you have legal limitations, resource limitations. We should focus on a grievance, not culpability, not who's at fault, not who's not at fault. For us, it's just about student and staff safety. Before you, there's a safety survey sent out to hundreds of our educators this past week. We received 337 responses when that was printed. You can read the results for yourself. It's worth noting, how many educators said they do not feel safe? If you add the last three categories, how often do you feel safe? Some of the time, once in a while, and other the time. Then 62.32% of the educators do not feel safe the majority of the time. We must do better. It starts by having open, authentic conversations that builds credibility and respect rather than doubts and mistrust. We can make this better. Everyone loses if we do not communicate and we choose to litigate. The children and staff win when we collaborate. Finally, a number of educators reached out to me because they're concerned about accident intimidation or retribution for addressing safety issues here. If you did that tonight, talk to me about that because they're concerned. I do not envision a scenario where anyone would face retribution for speaking tonight. That would be troubling. And while the union would support them, the school committee and superintendent can go on record tonight and allay any concerns, making it clear that the school board will not allow such a thing to happen. Other educators are here tonight to highlight safety concerns. Thank you for listening to us. Please work with us to make the schools safe. Thank you.
Nathan Andrews, Wasaki High School History Teacher, Wasaki Teachers Guild Vice President, former Wasaki High School and Wasaki Career and Tech Center, 68 Cumberland Street, Wasaki, Rhode Island. The situation regarding safety and security at Wasaki High School and Wasaki Area Career and Technical Center is dire. Students continue to wander the hallways during class times and especially during the lunch period. Many are emboldened to talk back to staff and teachers who are barely trying to get them to return to their classes or to the lunchroom. Teachers at the PM School are also concerned that there are no police officers present as there are a number of students who are in the program due to behavioral issues. As Rob stated earlier, overall, 62% of teachers in the district only feel safe some of the time or not at all, according to the survey sent out by the Wasaki Teachers Guild. While I do not disagree with positive behavioral interventions and supports, or PDIS as it's known, I and other teachers feel that Wasaki High School and the Career and Tech Center lack the amount of staff needed to properly implement the appropriate scaffolding and support that is required, in particular with administrators and counselors. Wasaki High School and the Wasaki Area Career and Tech normally would have six administrators total, four at Wasaki High School and two at the Career and Tech Center. Currently, there are only two at the high school and one at the Career and Tech Center. Social workers at both schools have very large case numbers already, making it difficult to follow up on students with behavioral issues. The proper implementation of PDIS definitely requires more training and, more importantly, adequate staffing. On another note, Wasaki High School has worked hard to come out from under the Rhode Island Department of Education to comprehensive support and intervention protocols. Teachers deserve recognition for their hard work and diligence. Ride track students and chronic absenteeism. And over the past year, teachers have cut chronic absenteeism in half while chronic student absenteeism has dropped from around 63% down to 48%. Despite the turnover of assistant principals at the high school, the deans have been consistent, present in the halls and responding to difficult situations. I hear their names called on Milwaukee Talkies many times during the day to deal with myriad issues. They also deserve recognition tonight. Thank you all for your time.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Ozania. Very self-employed in place, Wasaki. I'm the vice president of Wasaki Teachers Guild. I specifically cover paraprofessions for the daily basis, take these children and try to protect them. I think they need to be protected. All staff, faculty, everyone deserves to be safe and protected. I would like you to look around and look at everybody in here. I don't see angry faces. I see passionate faces, compassion, and wanting to do better and feel safe. We're here to ask for your help. The safety brings us out. It is our job to try to protect the children, the students of the city. It's your job to protect us. And that's not really the case this year. Many staff have been injured and repetitively, over and over again. I just want to end. There's many incident reports and that can show it. Please pay attention. Please let us do our job for a safer environment and address these safety risks. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Chris Parker, 102 Jackson Schoolhouse, teacher at Globe Park Elementary School. Just slightly over three years ago, I presented this same letter almost to you, Dr. McGee, almost to the dead for the need for extra support, especially at Globe Park Elementary School. I have submitted a letter up top for each and every one of you that Kim can pass out. However, one of the biggest pieces is that, looking at Globe Park School in comparison to our other schools, especially our middle schools, you'll see I have a set of data tables there to actually show the amount of supports versus one building versus the other. Globe Park has been very turbulent throughout the years. Since 2014, just shy of 11 years, we have gone through four building principals, five to six secretaries, and three school nurses. That is a tremendous turnover in an elementary school. I understand that vice principals are really not a cost-effective measure in our district, and it has always been a building block because finances will not support that. So I solicited pretty strongly in the need for a dean to assist with behavior management at the elementary level. Most specifically because a dean would be a Wasaki Education Department employee. They can help with state mandates for state testing. They can help with implementation of educational practices as well as do with the day-to-day needs of our behavior supports that are needed throughout our buildings. You can see times have changed, especially post-COVID. Typically, students arrive in kindergarten knowing at least some ABCs and 1-2-3s, and those days have gone. We have children arriving in our kindergarten classrooms who aren't even toilet trained. Don't even have their person. Hold it on. Our primary-age students especially have come with extreme maladaptive behaviors. And I'm talking about our typical students. They have maladaptive behaviors such as eloping, stripping off their clothing, scratching, biting, throwing desks. And this is all in a classroom of 25. And at Globe, we have multiple overages of 27 students, one teacher to those 27 students and the student with those maladaptive behaviors. We unfortunately cannot keep up with the behavior calls that come in day in and day out. On any given day, and I'm giving you a low-ball number, of at least 10 calls on our walkie-talkies for behavior support. And we cannot meet those in a timely fashion. And it's not from lack of time. Many times, our crisis team has been activated where we needed to pull certified staff from the classrooms to come and assist in these crisis situations. And I'm talking typical classrooms, our NOR. If our self-contained classrooms wear Globe surfaces, some of our most diverse students throughout the district, those students, when those staff call for assistance, it's because it's well beyond their staff's needs. And therefore, it's an imminent danger situation where we need to mobilize and assist. And I know I'm cutting quick on time. You can see in the data tables that I provided the differences of the students and the staff and the people available. Globe is hovering at 529 students. Hamlin, 525. The differences in the staffing between principals, vice principals, deans, social workers, guidance counselors, we don't have that at the elementary. We train our elementary students to help your middle school students become much more proficient members in our communities. Our elementary students cannot be let go like a middle school student can. The law states at eight, they can walk home alone with parent permission. However, our laws say ten is much more feasible number. That is not necessarily the case. I'm going to jump ahead because I believe in being proactive, and I know that we need to provide solutions. Once again, I gave you my entire spiel because obviously I'm giftedly outspoken. However, I know in our district that there is a need. There's a need to create a new role. And once upon a time, our Title I director was title-winning grants. I'm hoping we're writing grants to bring more monies into Wasaki. I know we need it. I submit to you and our fifth-grade students starting next year because it's imminent to reduce some of these numbers at the elementary and start providing at least a little bit of respite. I also want to just end especially with a thank you for those walkie-talkies minimize disruptions throughout our school day so that we can keep education for the classrooms that are running smoothly. And I think it's imperative that we have district-wide professional development when it comes to CPI protocols, crisis prevention and intervention, that align with the PDIS protocols. And I think with us moving into a district-wide professional development, that it's imminent and important that we do that as a district-wide place. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Nardone. I'm at 12 Perry Street, and I actually teach second grade at Hope Year Elementary. I've been taking some data this past week. I was interrupted an average of 242 times a day, with the highest actually being today, which was 286 times. Now, you probably are thinking that these interruptions are from student behavior, like throwing chairs, sorry, throwing chairs, throwing desks, getting physical, or simply flirting out. While all of this does happen, these 242 interruptions were not due to student behavior but due to our walkie-talkies. If you don't know, Hope Year has been without an intercom and direct phones to the classrooms since the start of the school year. So all of our calls regarding student behavior, the nurse, buses, dismissal, emergencies, are all given out on the walkie. This is a major safety issue because we cannot always hear what's being said on the walkie due to it cutting out. But also, to be honest, many of us teachers turn the walkie down because we don't want to be interrupted an additional 242 times a day. On top of this, it's a major distraction for teachers and students across Hope Year and Citizen because the two schools use the same walkie-talkie channel. When it goes off, my students have expressed that it makes them feel annoyed, mad, frustrated, and stressed out because they cannot hear over it. It's distracting and quite frankly, it wastes our time. And I teach a class of many MLL students, so being able to listen to myself and their classmates is very important if we want to help them learn. We even got an email today telling us to cut down the radio calls due to RICAS starting shortly. Our campus has been identified as a CSI school, and I guarantee you that the interruptions on the walkie will impact those students taking the RICAS. When it comes down to it, we don't hear emergencies on the walkie. And if something happens like what we see in schools on the news all the time, I personally don't feel safe, and we don't have a communication to keep our faculty and students safe. I have been told that it's just not in the budget to fix the intercoms, but to me, that means Wasaki is saying the safety of the students and faculty at Hope Year is not in the budget. Thank you.
Good evening, this is Debbie Cigan. I am a teacher at Citizen's Elementary. If you look it up, school safety is defined as "a creation of a secure and supportive environment where students and staff can learn and work without the fear of bullying, harassment, violence, or other threats by including physical security, emergency preparedness, and the fostering of a positive school culture." The current state of our school would greatly contradict that definition. School for many of our students is their safety. It's a place where they seek not only an education but reprieve from the hardships they have to cope with when the school day ends. They look to their classroom as not only a safe refuge, but the teachers and staff as their comfort and for some, the only mentors they have. Teachers give not all, they're all, not only to educate but encompass the sense of safety, belonging, and nurturing in their classrooms. This sense of safety, security, and the ability to teach and learn is being stolen from all of us. Why, you ask? Because of the consistent disruption from students who require far more assistance and resources that are not realistic in a typical academic setting. Yet they are placed in classrooms and teachers are left to figure it out. Our schools are short-staffed and we are functioning at bare minimum. I understand that every child has a right to an education, but does one student have the ability to steal the education of other students? Does that one student have the right to put everyone's safety at risk? These students are coming into our classrooms, destroying classrooms. They are throwing furniture or other items at teachers, staff, and students. Teachers and staff are assaulted by these same students. Classrooms are being evacuated, support is scarce because we are short-staffed, and our support teams are often answering multiple emergency calls all throughout the day. Shelters-in-place and rescue calls are becoming a norm, subjecting everyone involved to an unsafe environment, and the constant loss of learning is absolutely unacceptable. I could stand here and give you personal accounts of incidents that I have personally dealt with this year, but I want to take this moment to reinforce that this is our norm across the district. You can see it right here. So many incidents, but no discussions, no plans, just constant sweeping under the rug. Respectfully, I'd like to ask you, does it seem like this is a typical, acceptable environment for an academic setting? If your child or grandchild were sitting in these classrooms, would you feel comfortable? Would you remain silent? Or if you were faced with the daily anxiety of wild at work, not knowing if, when, or how a colleague would lash out? How would that affect your workday and your work environment? We are all asking for just the basic human right of safety in our schools to be addressed immediately. The dirt has been swept under the rug for far too long. It is no longer able to be kept hidden. I leave you with one final question. Do the teachers, staff, and students of Wasaki not deserve the basic human right to safety? Do not let your lack of action answer this question. As we all know, that actions speak louder than words. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Dana Alex. I'm a current senior at Wasaki High School. First of all, I'd just like to start, as a senior and as a resident of Wasaki, I'm extremely disappointed in the way that our school district handles safety measures at this school. And I've been in the Wasaki district my whole life. As you all know, on Monday, March 24th, we were in a lockdown for over an hour during our sixth period. No staff took proper measures, or the staff that, at least the staff I was around, took proper measures, and it was taken as a joke. The classroom I was in left the windows open, continued teaching, and the classroom next to me was laughing and saying that it doesn't matter. Staff has also said, and I quote, "Today at school, the threat is not real, so I'll continue to teach in my classroom during a lockdown as I please." Wow, we are in a lockdown. To me, that is a severe problem as a student because I should not feel like that while in that building. Another point I'd like to make is, some point in time within this year, a 22-year-old was let into the building. That is an intruder. And we were put onto a shelter-in-place. The shelter-in-place is at our school. It's not even a shelter-in-place anymore because there's no shelter being held. Students are allowed passes during this time. They're not kept in the classrooms, and the teachers don't really care. Like I said before, teachers take it as a joke. The student, the 22-year-old that walked into our school, signed in as a student and was let into the main office, which should be the hardest portion to enter our school from, which I find a little bit ridiculous. Excuse my words, but yeah. They were let into the school and they made it to the second floor of the building, into a classroom. To me, that is a problem because if that woman had a weapon or anything like that, whose lives would have been at risk? The students and staff that tried to work every day to keep us safe. Also, the, this is from my parents, the watered-down emails, they don't help the problem, and they don't provide any credibility on what's going on in the school. The kicking everything under the dirt and crushing it under the rug is not going to help us all at the end of the day, and it doesn't keep us safe, and it doesn't give parents any more right of mind to feel safe sending their kids to Wasaki High School. I've felt multiple times within my three years that I don't want to go to school tomorrow or I don't want to go to school today because there have been threats made against the school and nothing is done about it. We're putting shelter in place, and they call it a day. That's not okay, and it needs to change, at least after I graduate or while I'm still a senior in this school. Sorry. To end it off, I have a question. What will it take for you guys to invest in metal detectors in the school to better the safety of our schools? It's not something very hard to get one place. They detect steel. Any type of weapon, any type of something that should not belong in the school will be detected, and the resource officer at our school can deal with the measures continuing forward. But yes, what will it take for you guys to invest in metal detectors to better the safety of our schools before it's too late and something truly bad happens? Thank you.
Melissa Bubble, 650 Third Avenue, Wasaki, Rhode Island, 02895. I first would like to double-check, is the recording working tonight? The YouTube recording, all working tonight? Everything good? Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Okay, thank you. I am here to address a longstanding, unacceptable pattern, one that has allowed our schools to fall into disrepair while we feed the same tired excuse that there is no money to fix them. We have heard this story for years, and yet, we all know the truth. These conditions did not appear overnight. They are the result of years of neglect, of short-term patches instead of long-term solutions, of knowingly ignoring problems until they become crisis. Look no further than Globe School. The issues it faces today, the issues with the roof, poor air quality, and unsafe environment for students and staff were not studied. They were avoidable, but instead of constant, consistent maintenance and instead of fixing problems when they first arose, we saw Band-Aid solutions slap onto growing cracks. And now, we are told once again that there's no money to fix it properly. However, I do know recently that the roof is in the process of being bitted for repair. Let me ask you this. If your car needed a serious repair, would you just take it together and hope for the best? If your home had a leaking roof, would you just replace, would you just place a bucket underneath it and ignore it? Of course not. You would invest in real repairs because you know that waiting will only make things worse and more expensive. And if you didn't have the money right away, you would save up to make sure that the job was done right. So why don't we apply the same logic to our schools? Why do we allow the places where our children learn, our teachers work, to deteriorate year after year? The fact is, we do have the money. We just aren't prioritizing the schools. Holding on to the 7% for the new elementary school while kids and staff suffer in unsafe conditions is just irresponsible. It's negligent. Every day that this continues, we are forcing our students and teachers to pay the price for decisions that were made at the top, decisions that put their health and education second to financial maneuvering. Enough is enough. We cannot keep allowing this cycle to continue. We must prioritize real, long-term solutions over quick fixes. We must continue to commit with ongoing maintenance, not just emergency repairs. We must demand that our schools, our children's education be treated as a priority and not an afterthought. Globe School is just one example, but it represents a much larger problem. We need accountability. We need action, and we need it now because our students... because our students and teachers deserve better than this. During the March 5th meeting about the Globe Park school roof, a parent had asked for the roof repair cost documentation. She was told it would take too much time to accumulate and there was not a clear record of repairs as for years, most times it was an unlicensed roofer, which is also known as the maintenance repair guy, who has been paid to just pour flex seal on the leaking portions. And to those who have challenged me about the new elementary school discussion, that it wasn't discussed in 2017, I assure you I have proof that during the release of the Jacobs report, it was discussed in 2017. As for the high school and the others that are here to support our school system, I'd like to say I also support you all. And both students, staff, and guardians and parents are all concerned about safety. We need to put money towards making everyone feel safe. For far too long, our public schools have been put on the back burner. We need to start prioritizing our safety in our schools and our schools as a whole, as well as the education.
Hello, I'm Kian Burjahan. I live on 174th and 11th, in Wunsakia. I would like to express my concerns regarding Globe Elementary School. While meeting with the superintendent at Globe about the leaky roof, we were told that mitigation will continue to come back out to assure the safety of our staff and our students until the roof was fixed. I haven't heard anything about them coming back and seeing buckets in doorways is a little concerning considering all the rain we have had and have to come. Have we had a follow-up since the initial closing? It's also concerning that the roof can take anywhere from one to five weeks to fix, which means our children will most likely be in this school while it's being worked on or we have to close. How will we assure that's the safest? Will you follow up with a detailed plan? Roofwork can involve hazards such as bone debris and potential exposure to materials. It also can be very disruptive and potentially interfere with the learning environment. I also understand we are building a new school. What will we do different as far as maintenance and maintaining any repairs that we may not be able to afford in the future? Who will be held accountable when the school and others continue to deteriorate? What accountability measures can we put in place to ensure that maintenance and repairs are carried out promptly and effectively? Understand, Globe has needed a roof since before 2016. It's concerning and frustrating that the only people being held accountable brought something so preventable to our staff and our children. They now have to make up days due to financial repair negligence. Our children are very irritable, our parents and staff are scrambling. It's not fair. How can we prepare in the future for emergencies like this? I also would like to quickly address the last lockdown at the high school. As you may have seen or heard, parents have stated police scanners, said that a knife was recovered but the juvenile was followed. If this is accurate information, why does the email we receive always state that nothing credible was found? This raises serious questions about transparency and trust. We can't not, we can't help guide our children with this information. This school has several lockdowns a day and some we don't even know happened until our children come home. What can we do better to support our children, staff, and create a safer educational environment? Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Savannah Melly, 93 Board and Boulevard.
Excuse me, ma'am, but we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now? Okay, sorry about that. Good evening, my name is Savannah Melly, 93 Board and Boulevard. I'm a single parent of an eight-year-old and a five-year-old. And we've been part of the Globe Park School for three years now. I'm here tonight to address some concerns about communication negligence and poor decision-making that have directly impacted students and families. My first concern regards to transportation. When my five-year-old started school this year, her pediatrician requested she be placed on a harness on the school bus due to her small size. This was denied because she didn't have an ID. I was later told that we live too close to the school for bus service. But I don't have a liable transportation and the two previous years we did have bus service. My five-year-old has asthma making the .9-mile walk across railroad tracks and major roads, both unsafe and unhealthy. As a result, she has struggled with absences and tardiness, an issue that could have been avoided if the district prioritized student safety over rigid policies. Bullying. My eight-year-old has endured relentless bullying this year, none of which was reported to me by school staff, despite state policy or prior parent notification within 24 hours. The bullying escalated to the point where my child's life was written, yet no one informed me, checked on her, or ensured her emotional well-being. She was simply sent back to continue her day. Despite meeting with administrators, nothing changed. She no longer felt safe or supported at school and I felt there was no choice but to withdraw her and homeschool. I should not have had to make that decision. The district needs a victim-centered approach to bullying, one that includes proactive check-ins, accountability, and real consequences for inaction. By the extended day, the decision has been an unfair burden to both families, students, and the staff. The five-day closure was a direct result of years of neglected roof repairs, an issue dating back to at least 2016. Instead of addressing the root cause, failed district maintenance, the solution is to add longer school days, punishing those who have no part in the problem. Longer days mean increased fatigue, decreased focus, and less time for homework, extracurriculars, and family. Parents who set work schedules now struggle with dismissal times. Teachers who are already overworked are facing further exhaustion and are closer to burnout. They should not bear the consequence of poor leadership. The district needs to do better. Schools need to be a safe, supportive environment where students can learn and thrive, not places where parents are left fighting for basic protections. We need leadership that is proactive, transparent, and accountable, not ones that prioritize reactive, short-term decisions that create more harm than good. Our children and staff deserve better. Thank you.
Sharlene Golden, 15 Wild Brook Circle, Millville, Massachusetts. I'm a second-grade teacher and the secretary for the Wunsakia Teachers Guild. My goal in speaking here tonight is to make sure the committee understands our safety concerns and to beg you to take action that will make our schools safe for staff and students. I listen to these meetings and I hear reports on open positions, special ed numbers, closed work orders, and updates on the new school. Granted, all important information. But how come there's never a report detailing the number of assaults on teachers, or 911 calls, or shelter-in-place orders, or lockdowns, or student suspensions or arrests for violence? School safety should be our top priority. Collecting and analyzing this type of data would, one, acknowledge that there is a problem, and, two, help to focus our resources to ensure school safety. The survey numbers Robert Stewart presented earlier were not surprising, but it was sobering to see them on paper. If you actually dissect the numbers, 97% of our staff reported feeling unsafe at some point, 97%. And only nine, nine teachers out of the 337 that responded said they felt safe all of the time. That is a staggering statistic. How about the 122 teachers reporting that their instruction is interrupted more than five times a week by disruptive students and emergency orders? That's a lot of lost instructional time. Let's face it, some of our schools are out of control. Maybe if we regained control, teachers could actually teach and students could focus on learning. Maybe test scores would go up and we could get some schools out of CSI. Here's an example of how these interruptions affect all children, not just the unlucky ones stuck in classrooms with volatile students. While my students were at an itinerant class, a shelter in place was ordered. 911 was called and a child was taken out by ambulance. Right after that, another kid went off. While I don't know the details of what led to the shelter in place, here's what I do know. The lunch cycles for the entire school had to be adjusted. My class missed an hour of instructional time, so I skipped math. And my students were on edge for the rest of the day and I can tell you, not much learning went on. The vast majority of our students are kind, respectful kids who want to learn. By not addressing these dangerous disruptive behaviors, we are robbing these children of the fundamental right to an education. We are advocating for them. As a union officer, I get contacted by teachers across the district about safety issues. I see the pictures of classrooms that have been trashed and get asked how to fill out injury reports and what urgent care the district wants us to use. Frankly, much of what I hear is horrifying. For instance, a teacher was assaulted by a student and sustained an injury to her wrist. After wearing a brace and going to physical therapy for months, she has only regained 50% of the strength in that wrist and there's a good chance she will never fully recover. How about the teacher who got hit in the back of the head by a student? She's not sure if she was punched or hit with a Chromebook. Either way, she went to urgent care and even though she passed the concussion protocol, she was advised not to sleep more than four hours at a clip. Scary, right? I wish these were isolated cases. They are not and it is unacceptable. Violence in our school is on the rise and we do not have the staff or the resources to deal with the level of trauma, mental illness, and criminal behavior we are seeing in some of our students. We are a public school district, not a therapeutic facility and certainly not a juvenile detention center. Dangerous students, dangerous students are being dumped in classrooms without adequate support. I want to know how this is okay. As educators, we have the right to a safe working environment and the professional responsibility to demand a safe environment for our students. We've done what we can as educators. We've gone to central admin multiple times and now we've brought our concerns to this committee. It is incumbent on you to do something about it. Thank you.
Anyway, should I have one question for you?
I told you, I said you.
You did get it, you just did. Kimberly Codiere, Garden High Elementary School, kindergarten teacher, and I live currently at 255 W.A. here in Wunsakia. To be honest, the situation I'm going to speak about is something that I encountered last year. I never really was able to sit and reflect on what had happened to me over the past year and over time it just became the norm. When I heard that other teachers were encountering situations alike, I felt that I just wanted to be able to tell my story. I wanted them to know that they are not alone. Last year, while pregnant, I encountered situations in the classroom where I felt unsafe due to the behavior of these students. In particular, a student, despite receiving multiple combinations, continued to be violent and aggressive in any way. This led to 19 write-ups, seven suspensions, multiple 911 calls, resulting in restraints from support staff and EMT workers. At one point, I was shut in the principal's office for protection while the student tried to throw broken ceramic at me through the front office window and crawl through to attack me with my unborn child. Eloping from the classroom, school lockdowns, classroom evacuations resulting in the lack of teaching academics, trying to use my school-issued lanyard to choke me, climbing window ledges, jumping from furniture, trashing the classroom, which included flipping tables and throwing chairs, verbal threats each day wanting to harm me and my students, weekly conversations from other concerned parents, hitting, kicking, and biting, breaking the skin therefore resulting in support staff getting technical shots. Repeated behavioral meetings where the only options that were discussed were to implement more unrealistic combinations. In one specific discussion, instead of removing a student, we discussed having me possibly stay home for the seven remaining days of the school because I was pregnant and in danger. At the time of being seven to eight months pregnant, extremely ill and feeling unsafe daily, I had to sit in meetings where support of staff and admin, where I was placed behind a desk and two staff members on each side of me to keep me safe as the student was also placed behind a physical divider with a personal one-to-one worker. I dealt with this to the very last day where I had to leave the kindergarten graduation where combinations of support staff making sure that my unborn child and I were safe while passing my diplomas, taking pictures, and handing out gifts, all with a smile on my face. When classrooms become unpredictable, it hinders the ability of students to focus, learn, and grow. It places an undue emotional and physical strain on teachers who are committed to providing the best education possible. All I ask today is that we acknowledge that these challenges are happening and that they require attention. I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today in a manner that is not only close to my heart, but also everyone in this room. It's crucial for our well-being and success of our educational community.
My name is Alvin Terry. I am the chief operating officer for the district and just wanted to add some information on the.
Senator Torriani.
Yes, speak loudly, please. Certainly. I've never been accused of not being loud enough, so I apologize. I just want to add some details on the Globe Park roof. Indeed, there has been some leaks in the building. We did have the Jacobs report in 2016, which was a state report. They evaluated all schools across the entire state. And the Jacobs report had a number of findings in many districts. The caveat to that is while they had many findings, they didn't offer any funding or additional funding to the districts. So I don't know the specifics as to what was found in 2016. I know at Globe Park, we've had some persistent leaks. I would acknowledge at our meeting in March, a parent did inquire as to what repairs were done and what was documented. And as for those of you that work here, I'm sure you're sick of me saying it, but there were work orders. We had work orders. We had approximately 50 work orders. Each of them were responded to. There are some repairs we were able to do in-house. As you know, you know many of our facilities workers. They're a limited staff. I think you probably know them by face and name. They work very hard to try and repair the buildings as best they can according to budget, which is what they did at Globe. I can tell you, a few years ago, we had to have an hire roofing company for one section because there was an extreme amount of water leaking in to two of the classrooms. More recently, we've had the usual leaks and we go up and repair. We do. We use tar. We move any of the gravel. We put tar down, try and replace things as best we can anytime there is a leak because we don't have enough money to replace the roofs en masse across the district. At particularly Globe Park, recently, there was a five-day closure because there was a catastrophic event in terms of the ice and snowstorms that many of you probably experienced. And I did speak with the staff a few weeks back. The snow came down, then it froze up, then it melted, then it froze, then it melted, which caused separation in the ceilings, rather, in the roofing. And we had drastic leaks which were reported and that's what caused the building closure. We've had a remediation company come in. They did what we normally do. For any of you that had any type of issue, we always test to make sure the equality is safe. That is a protocol we put in place. For those of you who've experienced it in any building, you know, we test. Then we go back and do a second test and you're welcome to see them. And I believe Dr. Neesh shared the key equality test to Globe Park via email. I'm not sure if it's on the website, but it can be posted there. But it was shared out for our conversation. We're doing the best we can with the roofing. We're doing the best we can with the funding here in the district. I don't think I'm going to tell anyone because I'm newer to the district. For those of you who've spent your entire career here, we've always lacked funding for our facilities. And we do the best we can with what we get. We do the best we can with the facility staff that we have. And we're trying our best. At Globe Park, they did fix as much as they could. Every morning, the facility staff goes, particularly that building, they go to all of them, go to that building to make sure that there isn't any uptick in the leaks. There have been additional reports. We talked to the company and they came out. They were out yesterday, the day before, doing additional work in the gymnasium. And they have additional work that they'll be coming out for as it's reported. So that's how we're doing at Globe Park. And in addition to that, we don't have necessarily the money, but we did request. but we did request, and I'm not the finance director, it's the Perry's, but we did request assistance from the state, and they weren't able to help us out with the roof at some point in the very future in terms of how it's funded. But we do have it scheduled to have work starting in April. We're going to work with the faculty and staff and Ms. Tannell there to make sure that the roofing work is done so it doesn't interrupt instruction during the day. We're going to start work during the April break. And then beyond that, we're going to do work in such a way that it doesn't impact during the school day. That means that they will do work before school starts or after school gets out. While they might work in the gym when it's good weather, and then the students are out at phys ed, they'll work in the gym then to not interrupt things. Also taking into account, you know, state testing that's coming up. So that's what I have in terms of an update at Globe Park. And then one other item that came up, I'm not sure if it went to where, we did purchase radios for everyone. That was not in lieu of an intercom system anywhere. Those were purchased prior to any issues we've had with the intercom systems. We've applied for state funding to rewire our intercom systems. Unfortunately, the state will not refund us or pay for the actual intercoms. So they'll treat the wiring as an emergency, but they will not treat the intercoms as an emergency or telephones. And so, ever and ever where, I'm not expressing this, it's not in the vacuum. I can talk to Mr. Stewart, and I try and keep him apprised of what we're doing with the intercoms and the telephones. And particularly on St. Andrews, maybe this doesn't apply to the elementary level. For those who work at the elementary and middle school level, I had talked to Ms. Renegalo, Ms. Murphy, regarding this recently. I think it was about a month ago. So we are working with what we've got for money. We're rewiring where we can. And we're trying to find grants. I know I talked about grants earlier. Trying to find a way to fund the intercoms and the telephones as well. The radios were not purchased in lieu of that. They were purchased before this, and it was an add-on because oftentimes I would hear the old Amazon radios we would buy online didn't work across the Pothier Citizens Campus. It didn't work in the high school because of the frequencies. They didn't work across the campus here at the middle school. So we bought some very high-level radios. They're not quite police-grade, if you will, but they do work much better than what the radios we had in place before. So that's just information to share that I'm aware of. Hope I clarified a few points. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Annette LaBassar. I'm a special ed teacher at Harris Elementary School. I live at 147 Glen Road in Woodsocket. I'm here speaking for a lot of the teachers in my building. Oh, sorry. I'm speaking for a lot of the teachers in my building who can't speak because a lot of them are new. And our building is very dangerous. I have pictures of two injuries that I had this year. And one of them, I had to go to the urgent care. I needed a tetanus shot, and I needed antibiotics because the child's bite was so bad, he broke the skin. When I went to the school nurse, I was told that it was just a little bruise. But they told me that I was lucky that I went in because being a diabetic, I could have gotten very ill from it. Last year, I was injured in class. I broke my foot. I was in a boot. I went back to school. And on Valentine's Day, there was a child running through the hallway unwatched, and the parent was standing there. She kicked my boot and re-broke my foot. When I went back to the doctor, he took me out of school till my foot was completely healed. So I missed six months of school last year. Being a special ed teacher, that broke my heart because my kids mean a lot to me. There's not enough staff in the class. There's not enough help. I have been shorthanded since the beginning of the year. I had children that needed a one-on-two, and I never had anybody. I had a classroom assistant that retired in December. She has not been replaced yet. And I know that there are other TAs in the building that are missing. So this is part of their IEP. This is part of their federal grant. These kids need these TAs, and you need to find them somewhere so that these teachers are not working shorthanded. Our school is considered to be one of the most dangerous in the area because of the kids and the behaviors that we have, yet we only have one BI. That makes no sense to me. As a special ed teacher, very rarely do I call for help because I usually can take care of all my behaviors. I have been giving children by dawn because I can take care of my children. This year, I have been calling for help, and nobody has been coming. There are days that I call, and I have to call back an hour later because the behaviors are still going on. I'm retiring this year. I would have loved to have stayed on. I would have loved to stayed on because I love my kids and I love working with my kids, but I don't feel safe at my age to be working. So unfortunately, something that I love, I can't do anymore. I have to say that I used to love getting up and coming to school every day. Now it has become a chore. I wake up in the morning at 5:00, and I have to talk myself into coming to school. There are days when I come in and I sit and cry in my classroom. And my kids come over and give me a hug because they know how bad I feel. I have had meetings with the principal and the assistant special ed director where I have started crying because I'm so upset about this whole situation. If I were to tell anybody about teaching and if they should go into it now, I would say no. If I knew what I know now, I never would have become a teacher. And I absolutely love teaching. So it breaks my heart that this is going on and that nobody is backing us up.
Hi, my name is Carleen Neves, 86 East St. Barbara, Billford Island. I'm a kindergarten special ed education resource teacher at Burnin Heights. And I'm here today to express my concerns with the safety in the building. The safety concerns that I want to speak about are physical harm, safety, and mental aspects of these injuries. Over the last few years, working in the kindergarten setting, we've had several students come into our school with behaviors including aggression and causing physical harm to myself and other staff, as well as students. Over the last two years, this has definitely increased. At the school level, there are procedures and protocols that need to be followed for the safety and well-being of everyone. The number of time situations become unsafe is astounding. I'm now going to give just a few examples of my own personal experience as a resource teacher, but also as a member of the response team to behaviors in our school. This past year, multiple teachers and staff who will work in the classroom that I support have been injured and assaulted by one particular student. This student has injured multiple students and teachers and staff with the most recent person being myself. As the student becomes physical contact with a peer, I was then had to go and de-escalate the child, who then became physical with myself. After school that day, I went to urgent care, and I was asked these questions, which were very eye-opening. Do you feel safe in your school? Do you feel supported in your school? Do you work in a public school setting or a behavioral setting? Do you feel safe around this student? These questions were due to the mental aspect of being assaulted by a young child. The doctor was very concerned about mental aspects of this injury. I am very lucky that I was not injured worse than I was. Other issues that have happened and some have already been spoken about tonight: the evacuation of classrooms and the amount of time that takes, taking away from the learning of everybody, not just that one particular child. The kids have to leave really fast, and you take what you can with you and try to keep teaching, and the instructional time is lost. Students throwing physical objects, like scissors, chairs, desks. These things all become very unsafe rarely fast. Having to have soft lockdowns for thirty-plus minutes sometimes while additional support from outside, EMTs and stuff, arrive. Allowing the students to stay in a safe location, interrupting their schedule, changing lunch schedules, changing these things around. And also, as a member of the response team, having to stop mid-lesson, mid-group, mid-everything to respond to those calls. But then have to do a debrief afterwards, which is totally understandable. But it's taking you away from your job and taking you away from your students' learning. As a teacher and staff, we all have the right to work in a safe environment and be supported physically, mentally, and with building safety. Not just for ourselves, but our coworkers as well, but also for the students. At this point in time, there is a significant issue with these things. It's happening just not at Burnin and our schools, it's across the whole district. My question to you is, how can we fix this? How can teachers, staff, and students feel safe in our environments? These questions is what I'm asking the committee and administration to allow teachers and staff to do their job the best way that they can to educate the youth of our community and to become, so they can become what they want to be when they grow up and at adult age. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Mina Antunes, and I'm currently a senior at the Woodsocket High School. I'm here on the behalf as class president to speak for seniors, and not only just seniors, but the students of the high school. I have some quotes that I would like to say that came from a few students that I asked. How did you feel about the lockdown that happened on Monday? Personally, I wasn't there, but even as someone who goes to pick up their friend for school, I felt flustered. I felt scared for my friend because I didn't know what was happening. Information wasn't given. At the beginning of the school year, we were told that we would be doing Alice trainings, and I understand that teachers have done that. But why aren't we implementing it where students could also practice the same thing? So if something were to occur, how can we protect ourselves? Something else I would like to say. That could have been our last moment. The fact that a student, a senior, is coming to me saying that that could have been their last moment because they didn't know what was happening, they didn't know the circumstance at hand, we could have died. Students were not aware of the situation. High schoolers deserve complete transparency. We're making excuses for kids and strangers when they are threatening our students. Parents should be given information rather than "all is safe, all is well." Schools stopped taking lockdowns seriously, specifically teachers in the classroom. And I'm not speaking for all teachers because I know you guys do try your best, but there are some teachers that actually did not take it seriously. A senior said it would be way more coming to know what is happening rather than panicking by not knowing what is happening. And this is coming from my parent. Administration should be more trusted to share correct info with students and be prepared no matter what than be blindsided. Just some key moments I would like to share. Change needs to happen before it's too late. You need to listen to your community, and we need to install metal detectors into the high school.
My name is Pat Borg. I'm a local reporter. I host a local radio show for What That's Worth. But first and foremost, my name is Pat Borg. I'm a local reporter based out of Providence. And I also have a local radio show on 1380. That's not important. What I am actually is a lifelong civil libertarian. And the balance of my life will be actually spent engaging in conversations about civil liberties. I was so concerned, and by the way, I've tried to be very supportive of this school. You know, it's a wonderful group of people, both the parents and students. I've worked closely on a couple occasions with the state coverage on the local administrators here. Despite all the challenges, all of you have a lot to be proud of. This is really a wonderful community. But I wanted to express my concern about the failure of the Woodsocket Education Department to broadcast public comment here. Whether it's public comments or good in welfare or any one of the number of ways that people can characterize us, comment from the community is an integral part of democracy, whether it be at a school department, a city council building, whether it be a subcommittee, whether it be a Woodsocket housing department. I would encourage you, starting tonight, to record these portions of the meeting, to broadcast them live. There's too many people in this community who have to work multiple jobs. There's too many in this people's community who don't have adequate transportation to get here. They don't have childcare. Any one of a hundred legitimate reasons why they can't be here right now, although I'm sure some of them are aching to be here. So please, record this portion of the meeting, share it with the community aggressively so that we can all learn from each other and we can all take part in community. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Kim Pierce. I work at Burnin Heights and at Coleman. I live in Lincoln, Rhode Island. I didn't write anything down saying so many things I could have seen, or sorry, said, because I've seen so much. I have two schools, probably 500, 600 kids a week. My big concern that gets me up here is we have an early release day. Before lunchtime, we were told, "We're leaving early. We're leaving at 1:30." We started lunches. Kids are asking, "Why are we leaving? Why are we leaving?" Good day. But there was a problem at the high school, or middle school. There was a threat. But yes, we're feeding them, but there's a threat, and we leave them early. So I'm confused. Why are we feeding them if there's a threat or a potential threat early that's bringing us the cause to leave early? Why do we feed them? And I hope this doesn't sound bad because I know everyone needs to be fed. But either we're in danger or we're not. Parents are coming to release their kids because the high school kids are gone. How do we know they're not a danger? How do we know who the danger is? And yet, we're still sitting there in class waiting our turn to eat lunch. I was so confused. And I'm sure parents were. I don't get it. Honestly, I don't get it. If there's a danger, bring the parents to take the kids. They can wait a few more hours to have some type of food. Their life is more important than whether or not they have hot lunch. I'm sorry. Anyway, I hope we can figure that out because it's important that we're safe, even though we're hungry.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Gonzalez of Woodsocket Elementary School. I am here to formally express deep concerns on behalf of parents, students, staff of Globe Park Elementary School regarding the ongoing roof leaks and their impact on our children's education. The recent decision on the extended school day by 28 minutes for the remainder of the academic year to make up for the missed five days, missed five school days is both unfair, disruptive, in students, families, and educators. This issue stems from the school's failure to properly maintain this building since 2016. Now nearly nine years later, our children are being required to compensate for lost instructional time due to circumstances entirely beyond their control. This decision places an undue burden on students, parents, and staff who should not have to bear the consequences of longstanding maintenance neglect. The extension of the school day will significantly impact daily routines. Students who are normally dismissed at 2:20 p.m. should have time to complete their homework, engage in extracurricular activities, and spend quality time with their families. Additionally, many parents have work obligations that require them to be at their jobs by 4:00 p.m. And teachers, some of whom And teachers, some of whom commute long distances, also have personal and family responsibility. This change is practically concerning for students with special needs as they rely on structured schedules and routines that should not be disrupted. The lack of communication and parental input before they're implementing this decision is unacceptable. Parents should have been consulted to provide feedback on how this adjustment would affect their families. The students should not be held accountable for this administrative failure, nor should the staff, who are likely not receiving additional compensation for their extended hours. I strongly urge you to reconsider this decision and excuse the missed five days rather than penalizing students, parents, and staff. The responsibilities for these disruptions lies to those who failed to address the faculty issues in a timely manner, not with the school community that now has to bear the consequences. I appreciate your time and consideration and look forward to your prompt response on this matter. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to... We'd like to address the school committee this evening.
My name is Jenny Peters, 36th ward and half, Woodsocket. I was not planning to speak tonight. I have two kids at Burnin', second and fifth grade. I was here not too long ago talking about safety because my son felt threatened by a little student. And finally, things got a little better, but still, it's an issue. They're at the school all the time. And the fact that I'm considering homeschooling because I love my teachers, I love my kid's teacher, and trust them with my kids, but I do not trust the system. I don't like that my kids are having gym outside because they don't have their room. And I'm thinking, it's going to be hot pretty soon, it's going to be rainy days, but yet they can't have gym at their facility, they have to go outside. I see the teacher going outside with her stuff so kids can have physical activities. Are they going to fix it or not just because they're building a new school? I have concerns about safety of my kids. They have allergies to mold and I don't trust my kids being at school right now for that issue. It's water issue at the gym in some classrooms. And it's concerning for them that they spend so much time there and for the teachers, and I feel bad for everybody that they have to be in that building while I feel like everybody there is sitting there or in a nice building with AC. And I don't think you guys have any issue with water damage or mold while our kids sit in a room with those issues. That's all I'm saying.
I'm Michelle Marandola. I reside at 55 Huntington Avenue. I'm a school counselor at Villanova Middle School. One of the things that I've just been kind of kicking things in, I usually prepare something when I'm going to speak tonight, I did not. One of the things that I am noticing is, obviously, we are all coming together as a community of educators. A lot of us are residents or were residents at one point or another. And what I find kind of interesting as someone that works in more the mental health side of things is that we make a big push for restorative practices in our district. That is the way we want to move things forward, we want to work collaboratively, we want to repair relationships. This is a great opportunity to repair relationships. Tonight, we have addressed and discussed the needs of the school community. We are trying to build healthy relationships. In this case, it's usually between educators and students, but in this case, we would love to see some relationships built between your educators and the administration and so forth and so on. We want to reduce, prevent, and improve harmful behavior. We're giving you the information, so now you just have to decide what you're going to do with it. Repairing harm and restoring positive relationships. There's been a lot of harm done. We're not necessarily saying it's your fault that it's happening, but we're telling you it's happening. And then the last part is holding individuals and groups accountable. We're holding you accountable, just like you hold us accountable. I would like for you to look around and think about the men and women that go to work every day as if they were your sons and daughters, your own children. Would you feel good and have a clean conscience having your own family members and people that you love go into these situations that you've heard tonight? I know what goes on in my school and it's not great, and I have to say, after hearing some of this other stuff, I'm completely appalled and shocked. There is such a huge need for more mental health services. There is such a huge need. And I'm not just talking about the kids, clearly, we have some needs going on here ourselves. We get our monthly EAP newsletters or whatever the heck it is, that's not cutting it right now. We need more. We need support, we need to know you care, and we need to know that you support us. So please consider everything that's been said and do the right thing and help us to help our children. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kristen Beaton from 51 Gig Road in Barrowville, and I'm a special educator at Pothere School. This is completely off the cuff, I was not going to speak tonight, but I am nothing but an advocate for my students, and I teach a population that does not have a voice of their own and feel the need to speak for them. Obviously, all of us have dealt with some type of unsafe environment at work. But I'm sitting here thinking about my students and just some of the things that have gone on in the eight weeks that I've been back since my maternity leave. We have had so many shelters in place at Pothere that have affected the schedule of our day that I have students in diapers sitting in their own waste waiting to be changed because I don't have a bathroom in my room and can't take them out for extended periods of time because a student is running rampant in the halls. We have students vomiting in the classroom who can't leave to go to the nurse because a student is running rampant in the halls. When these things are happening, my students thrive on a regimented schedule. And when it is time for recess and we are sitting there for a half an hour waiting to know what's coming next, I can't explain to them that it's not safe for us to leave the classroom right now. I just have to distract. And therefore, their day spirals out of control. And then when I tell the parents, "I'm sorry, they cried all afternoon," I can't say, "Because a student was running through the building unsafe and we were in a shelter place and their whole routine was off." So, yes, there is unsafe behaviors in the school, but it is impacting more than just those unsafe students and those teachers. The entire student body is being impacted every day. Their needs aren't being met physically, never mind their educational needs. I also want to speak on the fact that my classroom is next to what we call the Behavior Intervention Office. The sounds that we hear in my classroom throughout the day would astound you. It sounds like a horror movie. We can hear furniture being thrown, there are screaming, there are teachers yelling, there are kids crying, there are teachers crying, there are staff outside of my room, sometimes five of them at once, trying to come up with a safety plan of what are we doing with this kid right now? And my students are inside, some of them with only a few words going, "What's that noise? Are you okay? What happened? Oh, no!" They're crying. That's traumatic. And they can't go home and tell their parents what happened because of their verbal abilities. So just think about them. That's why I soak.
Hello, my name is Karina Nguyen, 36th Ward Street, Providence, Rhode Island, 02908. One thing I want to bring to your attention is, not one middle school teacher spoke tonight about safety concerns. I work here at Hamlet Middle School, and I'm truly blessed to be here. This is my third year working in this district, and I come from one where there was only one middle school, and here there's two. And whereas there were a ton of safety concerns in my last school, there are almost none here. And that speaks volumes to our administration, our staff, and how things are changing right now. Something that I want to speak about is future safety concerns, as there is discussions about moving seventh and eighth grade to Villa and this building becoming a fifth and sixth grade building. My concern is that as we move over there, do you have systems put in place for all of those seventh and eighth graders that are going to be together in one building when they have never been before? Are you thinking about parents and the safety of the children? One privilege that we have of having two middle schools is that if there is bullying, if there is an issue that arises, if there is huge safety concerns, we can fix them at this time. A student can move to another building. You're helping families feel safe by having the two buildings and giving parents options. By putting us all in one building, you are taking all of that away, and you are putting over 200 additional students than we have now in one building and cramming us. Right now, we currently have two teams on each floor, we're going to be having three. That's a huge safety concern. What if something happens? All those kids are together. Students will no longer have the privilege of transitioning off cluster to go to their encore classes because now encore will be on, coming into our class to teach since they will no longer have a classroom of their own. It's a huge disappointment that students will no longer, they will basically be on cluster all day. And these are high-energy middle school students. The behaviors are going to increase if they don't have an outlet, if they don't have a place to go outside of their classrooms, other than gym if they have it that quarter. So I want you to consider these things as you're putting, making these big decisions without teacher input. And I would hope that you have, hope that you in the future have discussions with us about how we feel about it and hear our perspectives as we do work in these classrooms. And as I said, I did work in a building. It was one middle school in the whole district. There was nowhere for these kids to go if there were huge safety concerns. The only option was out-of-district placement, which is, almost never happens because it's so expensive. And so as the teachers are talking about what's happening in Burnin' and Globe, you're going to hear us say that in future years, if you do transition to a model where seventh and eighth grade is only in one building, it's going to be us having these problems. So I hope that you take that into consideration because right now, we do have a really great thing going right now here in Woodsocket, at least for the middle schools. I would love for that to continue. Thank you.
Can everybody hear me okay? My name is Bill Humphries, I live in Cranston, Rhode Island, I want to just call it my hat because... The reason I wanted to speak tonight is for the similar reason Karina wanted to speak as well, which is representing the middle schools. I hear the elementary school voices and I'm right there on the same side as you guys. Two of my colleagues this year on my team are from the elementary level and it's their first year in the middle school level. And to say it was pretty eye-opening for them within the first week is, would be an understatement. I've been here eight years, and it's kind of surprising to me to say that, I've been in this building for eight years now. I'm more proud of this job than I've ever been at this point, but there's a lot of changes that need to be made in terms of safety at all levels. The amount of altercation that students get into, that staff members who have to rush to in the middle of the hallways during passing time, off periods, missing preps, having to disrupt instruction because of different things that are going on, same stuff here at the elementary level as it is there. It's a problem. Because I know for a fact, one of the things that always comes to mind for me specifically was just before the year that we implemented the Alice training when the Nashville situation happened, we were on lockdown here on that same day. And that seventh grade class that I had was in tears, the entire class was in tears. And to mention the child trauma, obviously, people speaking about our issues as well mentally and how that affects us, I had to leave the building and call my father in tears, telling him what happened. That should not be how we come to work, that should not be how it is. And that's a few years ago. I don't really feel that much safer, even with some of the things that we've implemented. There seems to be a lot more confusion than there is understanding about how things should be and how we feel safe. While we work in Woodsocket, I did not grow up here, I'm an implant, I'm a coach here, I love what I do more than you guys realize. But I know how my colleagues feel too, and it's unacceptable, to be frank. But thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who wants to address the school committee?
Hi, I'm Ian Shansky, I'm a middle school teacher at Woodsocket Middle School in Villanova. Over the past few years...
Do you need an address, please?
Ian Shansky, I'm from, I teach at Woodsocket Middle School in Villanova. Over the past few years, the district has been moving to a platform of PBIS, PBMH, and restorative practice. And I 100% buy into all of these things, I fully support them. But when you read into them, the foundation of all these programs is that, like every single paper you read out, it says, "These can only work if your children have a safe and stable environment where they can develop a rhythm and things are predictable." And the unfortunate reality is, things are not safe and predictable in our middle schools right now, at least speaking from my own experience. I would say 65% of our students are rock solid. They're resilient, they can handle anything thrown on them, and they just, they don't react, they're well-regulated. 30, 35% of our kids are on the edge. They're, they want to be a part of the community, but either because of past trauma experiences or just their home life, they don't necessarily have all the skills they need to manage their emotions, their feelings, and their thoughts. And these are the kids that need these stable environments the most. Unfortunately, about 5% of our students have no desire, apparent desire, to be a part of our educational community within our building. And these students, they come into school and they actively target those 35%. They know they can get those kids unregulated, they know they can get those kids worked up. And then at that point, you've lost control of the entire classroom because of three, four kids on the entire team. We had a situation earlier this year where three of our, well, basically all of our 5%ers managed to somehow get an out-of-school suspension all in the same week. And I'll be honest, that was the most productive week we've ever had all year. Our 35%... We have kids who get multiple checks every single day, who get in trouble, and they're ISS or whatever, acting out. Those kids were completely regulated, listened to that entire week because those 5%ers weren't there. And I'm not saying we need to throw those kids out and send them to a training school or whatever, but we need the resources to better accommodate those kids' needs so our 35%ers or so can get that, can get the support they need and feel safe and regulated in the classroom. And I'm going to tell you a little, something that happened today, and this is, our schools are not safe for our students. And I don't mean just like in terms of like violence, I mean just like feeling safe and secure. I happened to be in the hallway when I heard a commotion today in the laboratory. I walked into the boys' lab and a kid was very distraught. He told me someone was recording him while he was in the bathroom stall. The perpetrator was still in the bathroom and admitted to recording the other kid over the stall. Okay? And, sorry, this may, just give me a second here. That kid who was, you know, the victim here is never, ever going to... is never, ever going to feel safe going to the bathroom in a public school again. And the thing is, that really kills me is I don't know that that kid is not going to see his victim first thing. Sorry. That the, sorry, let me rephrase here. I can't look at the victim and tell them that he will be safe because, in all lightness, his, the perpetrator here will probably be back in his classroom on the same team, on the same cluster, Monday morning. I can't look at this kid and tell him, "I will make sure you are safe and feel safe in this bathroom." I honestly don't know. And based on what's happened so far this year, I've seen the kids who chronically do these horrible things, is that that kid will probably be back in the same classroom on Monday morning. And that is unacceptable. There are, how many of your parents here? Okay? How would you feel if you went to, if you found out that your kid had someone take a picture of them in the bathroom, and almost the perpetrator was a little slap on the wrist? Would you be okay with that? We need to make sure our schools are safe for our students, both physically and mentally. Our kids should be able to feel safe and knowing that they're not going to have someone report them in the bathroom. Thank you.
How are you guys doing tonight? It's almost past my bedtime. I wasn't going to speak tonight because I figured I had no skin in the game. I don't work for the school department. But I'm a product of public education. And when I look out in the audience, I think of all my past educators. And I envisioned them being here tonight. So I'm here to speak on behalf of all these ladies and gentlemen.